...the Coles Walling Road, that community demonstrated where currently there are houses that would be in need of broadband. And then we also approached Dominion, about Scottsville Road. And then there was also, at the end of that report, an indication that there would be value of having broadband extended to Toddier Creek Park, which is just on the outskirts. I think there's perhaps a low probability that Dominion is going to be forthcoming and want to partner with ABBA. I still am convinced that the best way we can bring fiber into the town of Scottsville is going to be through a partnership between the electric cooperative in terms of application power and then working with C-Vix, private firm, which is Firefly, the very internet in. Anyhow, we will have to see. As of December 31st, I leave the Board of Supervisors. However, I was reappointed to the Board of the Alabama Broadband Parties, the White School, Service Treasure. So I will report back to you anytime I hear anything. And no matter who the supervisor is that gets elected, I will be coming back if we are able within the next year, which hopefully will be the case, to try to have one of these electric co-ops work with us to extend broadband in the community. So, any questions, concerns? Here we go. May I turn it back over?
Thank you.
Thank you, Breckin.
Next we have Nick Morrison. My mom is a worker. Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night. Yes, Nick Morrison, the planner with the Thomas Jefferson Planning and Strategic Commission. And here to speak on TJ PDC's role in the West Downtown planning efforts. So with that, I'll get underway. And if anyone has any questions or requests, feel free to stop me. The PDC was brought on to kind of facilitate the public engagement process with the area plan. So specific to our role, we were to host a project webpage, just to base the kind of landing page for just information resources related to the project, make sure that citizens are informed about where we are. We also were tasked with assisting with the development of a survey and then summarizing the feedback that we got from that survey that I'll go through in just a minute, and then assisting with any GIS or mapping work as needed that was identified in this process. So with that, I'm kind of running to what we found. So the survey that we worked and developed together with Matt, we had 31 responses to that. It was both paper and online. We got about 15 to 20 responses on the paper surveys, and the majority were those at the online format. And it was available for about a month, from July 31st to August 31st, that span of a month. We asked for respondents to enter their address information, so just kind of have a basic understanding. I think in some previous survey efforts, there have been a kind of a wide range of folks that were responding from outside of Scottsville. So those that answered this question, we had 74 that lived in Scottsville, two that lived in Skylar and then wanted S-Mont, so just three of the outliers. It was discussed prior to this meeting to try and break some of that out. We've got street address information, so generalizing, not identifying specific parcels or specific addresses, but looking more towards within Scottsville, where were those responses coming from, north side, south side. So that way we could start to kind of build and parse out some of the more generalized data here.
Thank you. I have a 71 that was the only number that specified whether they're brown.
Correct. So I think 77 people answered that question, because we didn't even, it didn't require answers, so people didn't want it specifically. We had their address information, they didn't have to. We did ask a couple demographic questions, providing context to the information. So we did ask age. That 56 to 65 cohort had 22% of the makeup, followed by 21% of 65 older. So that 56-plus age cohort represented about 43% of respondents. But then also a pretty fair breakdown between the 26 to 35, 36 to 45 age group as well, though that 19%, and the 46 to 45, about 14. Matt said that that's pretty, you know, analogous to the makeup of age trends here. So it's nice to see that kind of match with what we got in the survey, what's actually here in Scottsville. We then asked how long people have lived in Scottsville, and 50% have lived over 15 or 40 years. So a lot of interest in how, you know, the smaller area plan proceeds, because people live here for a long time. Then you can see the breakdown around that. The goal, again, after discussions, was to kind of start breaking some of this information out more. So yes, we have age, yes, we've got how long, what year, how do you look at those individual responses and see how they responded to subsequent questions. So starting to build a little bit more of a robust of a kind of data analysis. So now that I have kind of my party board, or so that would be something that we'd bring back to you, but just breaks down the data a little bit more. With that, we get into more of the kind of the specific questions. So we asked people to rate, kind of community characteristics specific to Scottsville on a good average or poor rating, so just kind of a simple three-tier response rate. The rule setting came up with 87% rated that in the good category, followed by the familial atmosphere, Scottsville's access to decent localities, and then housing, that is a four point, you can see the rate down there. Ones that were rated poor or proximity to employment at 36% and then proximity to shopping, so 34% of those that responded to that question rated that as poor. And then probably consistent with a lot of things that you all already know and heard, but just provide us some context. We then asked to kind of look at what would you prioritize in terms of improving the sense of community? And looking at solutions, traffic solutions for Route 20 was rated as a high priority. I understand that's a very kind of vague, you know, traffic solutions is not all encompassing. So there may be some further analysis to figure out what those solutions will be, but that is just a starting point. And then additional professional medical services was ranked pretty high as well, followed by more job opportunities close to Scottsville, and you can see the rate down there. Improved landscaping along the roadside was the one that had the lowest high rating, so not of high priority with that. We then kind of geared more towards housing to see if you could parse out some priorities for what types of housing were needed in Scottsville. Single-family residential had the highest rating, with 37% as rated as a high priority. But they all kind of, there's a clear need for housing, as identified by the respondents to the survey, and that they all seem to follow pretty closely on. So the 55-plus residential community assisted living, and then also mixed-use apartments were rated as high. On the opposite end of that spectrum, a duplex or a townhouse were the lowest ones to that rating. So, yeah. Then looking at, if you were to prioritize certain businesses to recruit to the area, what would those be? And offices, medical services, and technology have the highest rating, highest priority rating at 55%, followed by support for home business, and then basic retail shops and services. And in the comments, we saw some contextualization for what, you know, supports for home business would be. So it's that co-working space, is that access to reliable, high-speed internet. So providing a little bit of a breakdown to just kind of that, again, more open-ended topic there. And then those that fell to the lower priority list were towards oriented shops, slight major action, new restaurants, nightly. See the breakdown there that rated that as a high priority. Looking further at transportation, we asked what were kind of the major transportation obstacles in Scottsville resident space? And 39% rated a lack of sidewalks as a major obstacle. In an area as small as Scottsville, I'm sure you all are kind of well aware where those gaps are. So it's nice that that kind of comes out. Travel time and long distances were another major obstacle, as well as access to public transit, jobs. And then, again, on the other end of that spectrum, school traffic, only 7% rated that as a major problem. Lack of pedestrian crossings, so not pedestrian infrastructure, but looking specifically at, you know, crosswalks, things like that, only 18% rated that as a major obstacle. The lack of bike lanes at 19%. And then we asked about usage of parks in town, and 30%, which was the highest category, use those a few times a year. It's nice that only 6% use them never. So it's, you know, kind of shows that breakdowns to how people are using that asset. And then the following question, we asked, what could be added to kind of incentivize and encourage more usage of those? A fitness trail with exercise stations were, was an option that came to the top, followed by squash playground, wide pond, dog park, murals or sculptures fell to the least, at least worth there. And then kind of summarizing it all, looking at what would be prioritized in this area. So additional job opportunities close proximity to Scottsville had the highest percentage of votes at 47%, followed by creating, sense of community, enhancing sense of community, because Scottsville has a great sense of community already, but how do you kind of work, how does this plan address enhancing that, and what does enhancing look like? And then additional shopping and retail at 39%, followed by those other categories. Transportation opportunities, for the least, in terms of what the priority focus area should be, certainly still in court, but maybe that priority falls below some of the ones in terms of what to focus on. And then kind of pulling together from the open-ended responses. So each of these questions have, I've included where people could fill in certain comments, and there was open-ended questions as well. And you need to kind of pull out, while it's great to want to attract new business, we also need to make sure that there's a resident, you know, population that can support existing businesses, and how do you kind of increase that? Also, this, you know, kind of the wrestling between the small-town feel, the urban charm, with the, you know, the need to have to travel to Charlottesville for some services that are here in Scottsville, and, you know, providing more housing options for the density. So how do you kind of, not that it's an if, that, or, you know, it's all or nothing, but kind of that spectrum of keeping it exactly how it is versus kind of transformative, intentional development over time. There also was a fair amount of comments as, you know, density is to increase, because we have the cycle of thinking of, how does that play with infrastructure needs? So how does that impact on Route 20? Are there beliefs that can support, you know, find growth? So a lot of different kinds of comments related to that. Safety opportunity, you know, improvements on Route 20 was, you know, comments, that was something that came up. You know, looking at kind of, uh, higher in the road, congestion, what, along the way. And improved river access and community program, maybe events was another thing that came out of those comments, access to reliable internet. And then a fair amount of commenting on, you know, making sure that any sort of development is cohesive and contextualized to the existing conditions of Scottsville, so you're not doing some, you know, crazily dense sort of development that you might see in a pro Z or a R-Still, but something that, again, is more cohesive and ties into the historic downtown. And then, you know, through this process and subsequent planning processes, that you would figure out how, how that best, you know, that best approach. But those were, those were the themes. And then finally, you know, we recently understand kind of the shortcomings of the survey. It's not going to capture everything and every data point. This is just one component, and it provides, you know, some, you know, the residents' ideas and vision for Scottsville. And again, we understand that what comes from this has to feed into the other consulting teams, and, you know, everyone has to kind of put these certain things together, formulate recommendations and strategies for how best to approach the project. And I think if you have the tools, the comprehensive planning update, if you turn in, you've have identified that parcel as kind of transformative mixed use. The existing zoning may need to, you know, the industrial zoning, there may be some change there, but you have the tools, and you've set yourselves up for success, which makes our job so unusual. And, you know, I think Zoe from the consulting team will be able to speak a lot more to market conditions and how that plays into the recommendations that they, that they came with. But this was able to provide some context to the community's feelings towards, again, kind of being more open and broad. So with that, I'd be happy to put it up to questions.
Thank you, Mary. Good night.
I'm here from Waukesha Development and as a consultant team. We're really here to study the feasibility of doing this project from a financial standpoint, as well as several other components. So the reason that we were brought on is we're a small developing company based in the U.S. Virginia. We have done projects in small communities across Virginia, and everywhere from eastern shore to Denver. And so this is very similar to some of the projects that we've done before. So here to share some preliminary findings. Again, we're here to look at the feasibility of the property redevelopment, identify some potential uses, talk about some financing tools and funding sources, identify...
Do you want to keep seeing these slides? Is that, can I tell the floor come down?
No.
Yeah. Move it back close to the window. Uh, woo! Is that good?
That's good.
Any other?
Are we okay with the lighting? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Thanks, Charlie. So, you know, we're going to look at feasibility, talk about some potential uses. We've taken a lot of the feedback, a lot of what came out of that survey, as well as other surveys that we've done in the past, studies. Look at some financing tools and funding sources, and talk about potential challenges and opportunities as well, to often come from, like these sites. But our ultimate goal is to propose a financial mixed-use facility. Mixed-use is really what we've heard as in demand. So just to touch on briefly, a couple reasons why the site is a potential redevelopment site, and it should no longer really be used for kind of heavy industrial use it was built for. Location and access. The modern industrial user really wants to be about two to five miles from main arteries, transportation arteries through the states, and places like 95, 85, 81. They want to be very close to those to get to their customers quickly. And as has been pointed out before, the access to the building now through a mostly residential area is, is challenging for, something like truck tracks, a lot of those things. The physical structure is also really not catered to the modern industrial user anymore. It has about 15-foot ceilings, and most users want to see at least 22-foot ceilings. Saying earlier, we got a request for 40-foot ceilings in Kewestore the other day. So they're really looking for just higher and higher and higher ceilings. And then its current condition, it just really financially does not make sense for an industrial user to come in and retrofit their building to modern uses when there are so many new industrial buildings going up in the area. So, yes.
So I believe that it has a levee around the Timmons floodplain just down here. Are you considering that as well, including the area?
We are. And that's actually an important component when it comes to the parking, because a substantial amount of parking is on the other side of the levee. So that's, that's a constraint we're looking at. I also know that the Timmons group is looking at the actual integrity of the levee and all of those things.
That's probably an important thing for me to share, that the Timmons engine here is not here this evening. They had other site visits that they had to get to for the current projects. They sent a quick note with their progress. They pulled flood modeling information from FEMA. It hasn't been, the site hasn't been studied since 1976, so they're recommending an updated computer-based model, which may be more accurate, and will, will change up or down the size of the floodgway in that site. The levee that's there is tall enough, and was built immediately after the downtown levee. They have not drilled that levee to verify how it's constructed. They also looked at the pump system that was in place. There were a series of portable pumps that were used, rather than fixed pumps like what we have here. That, there are a couple of design changes that they would make, recommending a more durable system in the future, but it didn't seem like a deal right there. They didn't find anything that was like hard to stop. This site can't be worked with, because of its funding issue. Sorry.
So moving on to proposed potential uses, we've heard, again, a need for mixed use. And so what we would propose is residential and commercial mixed-use property. The reason for that is, like we've heard, there's a demand for residential units in the Scottsville community. And there's also a need beyond, just to see what's been going on in the Charlottesville markets. It's been really interesting over the last five years, and we think that there's a real opportunity for Scottsville to harness its strengths and capitalize on that need of folks that are, frankly, the demand is just, supply's just not keeping up with demand. We think that there's an opportunity there. In terms of commercial, we've heard, as was shown in the survey that I just presented, there's a, there's a demand for more commercial space. And so our goal here would be to help attract, use the site to attract new business, to not attract from downtown, but really create an opportunity for new business. We also really focus on job creation, leveraging the site for job creation. The more, the more space you create your business, the more, no more jobs you're going to find. So really, one thing to keep in mind as we talk about these uses is that potential tenants also help guide how this space is crafted. We are going to hear a little bit more about that in our financial analysis. But really, you know, you could have a 5,000-square-foot space, or 10,000, or 20,000-square-foot space. There's enough room on a site to play with. And so a lot of that's going to do dependent on commercial, but we're going to kind of carve up general commercial and use of potential uses there. He's a poor show. Very popular. So what you're going to see next is a, is a layout of the site. This is not a rendering or a proposed development plan by any means. It is just our architect getting a sense of the site, a spatial exercise. So unfortunately, the colors don't come through there, but what you will see is that that main building is carved up into a bunch of little units. But it does not take into consideration things like architectural code, building code, things that would need to be considered from a historic preservation standpoint, but just how many units could actually fit in the building by carving it up, ranging a square footage in different ways. And so that comes out to about 173 units. We are not proposing that many units by any means, but it's just a good exercise to actually, you know, scope of the site, and you can see that levee going around on top of the property. So that, and that also doesn't take into account over 32,000 square feet that are in those ancillary buildings to the left. So it's a lot of square footage to play around.
And is that four floors? Are the 200 floors are in that house?
It's mostly single-story. There's a little bit of an office space on the second story, but it's a frame.
So there's a negative, like, in the floor?
Right. We're not discussing wafting of building right now. And that's something that we're looking at structurally, is ensuring that the building can actually look, interesting, foundation can support load, not including wafting. So looking at preliminary financial analysis, making a lot of assumptions, but just to give us an idea of where we're headed with this, we have about 180,000 square feet on the site to play with. So if we carve that up into about 100,000 square feet of residential, we could yield, give or take, 100 apartments, depending on how much square footage was, was per unit. And we would leave the rest in commercial, about 396,000 square feet. And then when we look at financials, we take two approaches. One is the income approach, and one is the cost approach. So when we look at the income approach, we're going to just make an assumption, our rent is going to be about, for a residential unit, an average of $900 a month, including utilities. What we've read in the surveys is that there's really an appetite for less than $1,000 a month in rent in the Scottsville market. But again, looking ahead to the potential new tenants that might be willing to pay more, because from a much more expensive market. So I think a $950 average in there is a good starting place for us to look at from a financial analysis standpoint. And again, including utilities is a really nice way to round that out for both the resident and the landlord, their efficiencies in including those numbers. And then we're looking at lease rates for the commercial space, about $7 per square foot, which is fairly standard across the board. So all of these factors considered, including expenses like insurance, property taxes, tax fees, those kinds of things, which you have to consider per unit, and efficiency rates, meaning a space that you really don't make money on, like utility closets, hallways, and all those kinds of things. We're looking at a net operating income of about $1 million a year there, giving us a theoretical value of about $12.5 million. So that's the income approach. Now we move on to the cost approach, which is how much is it going to cost for this building to get done? And I know we have a little bit of sticker shock there, but looking at about the amount of square footage we have there, and looking at the average cost of $130 a square foot, that's going to be about a $25 million project. That doesn't include tenant outfit for specific uses in the commercial side of things. And 130 is fairly standard. We found our product range from about 110 to 130, so 130 is being fairly conservative. But again, we have experienced using things like non-square tax credits, which we feel that this site will likely qualify for, given its age, its historical significance. So putting state and federal tax credits together, that gives us an equity of about $8.3 million. So our residual cost is $16 million compared to our valid, theoretical value of $12.5 million. Meaning we have an equity gap of $3.5 million we need to solve for, so that this makes financial sense really good. And there are a lot of tools outside of, you know, traditional bank financing that can lend themselves to tightening this gap. So a couple of those are state grants. So we've actually been able to take advantage of several of these grant opportunities and have found them to be really supportive of these kinds of projects. So there's the Industrial Revitalization Fund, which helps communities find those catalytic transformational projects, and help either through a loan or a grant fund of course of that project, to bring these former industrial sites, or what are often called white elephant sites, out of being unused. Live Community Initiative is fairly similar in terms of its goals of getting those catalytic projects off the ground. Those are through the Department of Housing and Community Development. And then there's the Brown Field Restoration and Economic Development, sorry, Economic Redevelopment Assistance Fund, DBA. And that funding source is there to provide overplanning and remediation funds potentially for brown field sites, meaning that helps communities identify potential contaminant on a site, like contaminated soils, asbestos, lead, so that everyone really understands what's needed going into this site. And our final... And our final report will recommend further environmental investigation of the site. And then moving on to tax credits. So like I said, we have experience with historic tax credits. This does introduce some need for collaboration with the Department of Historic Resources, ensuring that you're maintaining the historic integrity of the building. They are a great way to help subsidize and finance a lot of these, these redevelopment projects. And then there are the New Market Tax Credits, or a federal program to help bring investment, outside investment to certain census tracts. And we've found that Scottsville would qualify for these. And then there's Low Income Housing Tax Credits, which would help the developer offset the cost of creating more affordable units within this building, housing units. So really, you have insimation, building a model around a number of residential units and commercial spaces, making some assumptions to help us develop preliminary financial analysis. But I did promise to talk about potential challenges and opportunities. They always arise with these crap, with these kinds of projects. And so I've been hopeful to discuss our, as I mentioned, this is a really big site. And so that provides a lot of exciting opportunity for mixed-use development, but it can also just be a bit of, you know, a daunting project. And so that's something to take into consideration. And then there's acquisition cost. It's important, it's really important to know, our financial model as it stands right now does not incorporate an acquisition cost. And so realizing that this property is currently under private ownership, that needs to be considered. And when you're looking at the, something like an acquisition cost, it's important to note the cost to carry. This is one thing that when I got into it all, and I was just, I had sticker shock over, which is what it costs to just hold a building in your company's name, which includes, you know, liability insurance, in this case, emergency flood services, landscaping, all of these things really add up over time. And so that's something really important to keep in mind. You know, especially talking about liability. There have been several times that have come up to one of our sites and someone had been visiting that studio, not having key to the site. Important to keep that in mind. And then moving on to financing in a small community, realizing that anyone undertaking this project is going to be really likely looking for traditional bank financing in addition to those other sources that we talked about. And so going back to building size, taking on a project in size is just something to keep in mind, and that would be certainly not a risk for any financial institution. And we have potential market strengths. So a lot of the studies that have been done on the market, we're reviewing that all, that's going to be incorporated, incorporated into our final analysis. But looking at, you know, filling a building this large, how long it would take to do that, you know, knowing that there is a demand for residential units, would it be 100 or would it be 70, knowing that there's a demand of commercial space? Is that 80,000 square feet or is it less? So understanding that while you take on this project. Looking at environmental site conditions, we talked about that, that's important to understand going in. And then looking at zoning, this is a really exciting opportunity to look at zoning. Like we talked about a little bit earlier, it's currently zoned industrial, or I believe the site itself is zoned light industrial, the building is zoned industrial. And there are different ways to play around with that because there's actually several potential uses, like I believe office and some other things, actually dwellings are conditional uses in the light industrial zone now, but they don't allow for a lot of density. And so is, is that something that the community would be interested in, is building in new functions to the light industrial zone so it could keep some of those uses as well, expanding as well, and being a more flexible site? There's also, it's definitely worth talking about planned unit development options and looking at, you know, the site as a whole and the building itself and the functions that would require or review by the, the town and zoning commission, zoning commission. We talked about building access, so a little bit earlier, so actually getting to the site and I think the traffic flow would be very different than it had been historically with, you know, between 1, 300 factory workers coming in and out, but also recognizing that the traffic would be different than it is right now if it were to be repurposed. And then talking about an ownership structure is going to be really important. And a partnership between the town and the developer, whether that may be, that's going to be important because some of the grants, or the grants that we talked about earlier are not made available to private developers, they're made available to local governments and municipalities. And so for a developer, if they were interested in accessing those resources, would want a need to partner with the town. And so I really think, and that will rely on zoning, building access, in so many ways, this is going to be a partnership. And so that's really an exciting opportunity when taking on this project. So just to sum it up, sorry, I know I've taken up a bunch of everyone's time. Feasibility studies, that's our end goal. How can we finance this project? How can we close that $3.5 million gap? That's what we're going to be working on as we continue with this study. You know, programming and zoning the space, redevelopment, flexibility in mind, and long-term success. So this is really a resource for the community and the region at large. Looking into those financing tools, taking advantage of what's out there and to leverage and make this project a reality. And then looking at the challenges and opportunities and understanding really a risk associated with the project, but also the chances to form partnerships and move Scottsville forward in this way. So thank you all so much for your time and helping to answer your questions.
Once you have this completed, it's obviously kind of a specialty project. It requires a specialty developer. Surely. Can you, can you help us in any way to identify some folks who are interested in something like this, or is that still?
I can certainly ask my boss what his thoughts are on that. I think it's, there are a limited number of people that do this, but we can, I can definitely ask if that's something we can include.
So the next steps here, I'll take this content and the figures that we've gotten today and refine it into a draft small area plan, how this site relates to the nearby west downtown neighborhood on up to the Valley Street 120 connection to the wider region, and that draft document will be up before planning commission, probably during November or anything. Planning commission can be up on a November 20th here for all updates and work sessions. Thank you so much. So, thank you.
Would anybody in the public like to address us?
Ron Smith, President of Scottsville. I just wanted to make the councilman and staff aware that I have been approved as taking over elections to help people register to vote. The Warren Rogers used to do that and then she took away and it's been, nobody's been doing it for some years now, but if you know anybody that needs to register in Virginia to vote, it's registered at the National Slater, it's not registered at all. I would say they, and I would ask Matt and Thomas if anybody requires through the town office, if you call, I'll meet with them, I'll even hand carry your application to the library store in Apple Hall. So just want to make that available to any other needs and type of people.
Ron, I believe the library is going to do a registration drive as well.
They have a library. They're not prepared.
Okay.
Could anyone else like to address us? Okay, Mary's report. This past Saturday, we have the New Town Flex, also moved this unit today and we added to, I think it would be giving us the Road Bus Park, which we'll be building out for the next, hopefully, year. I'm going to talk to you about here, which is health equity and access in rural regions. This is something that I, with Peter Rat and Jeffrey Plank, started working on two years ago. Some of the things that we have done, and it has taken a while, you know, at least it wasn't 10 years of talking and doing something. In August, we provided through, through UVA, free sports physicals for middle and high school students. And that's something that we will be doing with UVA, the Department of Medicine, on an annual basis. We may be doing it two times a year, we're not sure yet. We also, this past Saturday, the University of Virginia Department of Medicine, with the Virginia Wellness Initiative or Institute, which is a part of the Department of Medicine, ran a health screening. And it was pretty accurate, I would say. Matt, you went through it?
Yeah, I did.
I did. Did you do it?
I didn't make it up. I was at the soccer field.
But we had, I think we had a total of 20 vendors at this. We had a petting zoo, which here co-sponsored with the Chamber of Commerce. Scan was there with their programming and they actually sponsored the Starlight through the Discovery Museum. Two of the highlights was the water test results. We actually had 144 people participating, which we thought we would be lucky if we got it, if they. And about half of them came to pick up their results. And the other thing we did was a health presentation by four girls from the Boys and Girls Club. And this is something that we will be building on for the future. So we're still at the beginning stages of what this health initiative looks like in the long term, but right now we're with doing baby steps. So that's my report. Any questions? I did see medical a few times pop up in these presentations, so stay tuned. Okay, reports of charter committees. Dan, do you want to kick this off?
Yes, I will. We are, as the parks committee, every couple of weeks on Thursday night, we have been the last number of months in doing our work sessions, which I think sadly will be coming to a close sometime soon because we're running out of light. But we have used them to do some needed maintenance on various parks. It's been a very successful thing. With Laura's help, she has created a document where we're looking at long-term maintenance for the town. There's a discussion going on between members of the committee about that and we're going to give some feedback to Laura, which we've written back before. There is a voice scout who has been working on getting this Eagle Service Project done by putting some signs in the mangy nature area and also working out doing a couple of foot bridges and opening up a path along the lake that's been a little bit overrun. So those of you who are interested, he's still needing some financial assistance, also looking for volunteers for that. We're happy with the efforts and the stuff that's up on these rates over half of the money that he needs. And the other thing would be, there's a grant that has been acquired that, thanks to our town administrator, that's going to allow us to do an engineering study of one of the important trails in the mangy nature area and we're in the process of putting together some pieces to start that effort. So that's been really encouraging. If you have interest in the park committee, please give us a holler, we could always use more volunteers and more people. And we will be moving some of those work sessions to...